This is the public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item.
We have one, but that is an agenda item.
Okay. Five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of October 1st, 2018, and the joint board meeting on September 27th. There's two sets of meeting minutes in the packet. Any questions?
Um, one thing, um, the joint.
The joint minutes?
And the joint minutes, um, number nine, um, I think it's, um, the last sentence does match the state statute, not statue.
Oh, yeah. Just a typo, yeah.
Yeah.
Good guess. Anything else? Okay, um, we can approve them together if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve both minutes from both meetings.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the village board meeting for minutes for October 1st and the joint meeting minutes for September 27th. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abst- abstention.
One abstention. Jeff? Okay, motion passes. Uh, before we get to that, um, we have a representative here from Christmas in the Grove that would like to come up and, uh, get her presentation underway if she could before that. So, Paula?
I don't actually have a full presentation. Um, what I'm just looking for is, I'm sorry, I'm already, I've got a fact agenda, so I figured I'd go light. Um, all I'm really looking for is kind of that formal approval each year that we get to be able to do the Christmas Grove, uh, Christmas in the Grove, Friday night. Um, it's at 7:00 PM. We start at Cottage Grove School and our permission again at the fire station with this last year that seemed to work really well. Um, we got great cooperation from our police department to help us in that regard and actually our rugby club. Um, they were awesome. They provided all the volunteers to man all of the intersections so that it was safe. Um, but we do close Highway N for approximately 30 to 40 minutes. And so, I'm just looking for a formal approval for that so we can go ahead with that plan.
Okay. Uh, please, was that route okay with you and the way it went last year?
Yes, it's great.
Okay.
There's really actually nothing that we have to do. This is really more just to make sure that the board knows and also that we get out from a public point of view what the route's going to be.
Right.
But they don't have to actually come to us that's, they're extending us that courtesy to give us that information.
Sure. Fine with saying that's fine with me. Anybody?
We don't need a motion then?
So, so it's the same as they fire, um, the-
Yes, the festival parade.
We needed a motion last year because there was an attorney who spoke up and said that they had to get, uh, permission and then he actually wrote the ordinances and found out that was untrue, so.
Okay.
Always nice to have you here. Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
We're good then?
Yeah.
Okay, we're taking that as gospel.
You got it. It's on tape, we can't change it. All right. Back up to item six, presentations to the board. We have Monona Grove School District on the upcoming referendum. Dan, Jared?
Hey, well, thank you for allowing us to spend some time with you this evening. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Dan Holson, uh, superintendent for the school district, and this is Jared Rosie, our director of business services. Uh, we brought with us a presentation. We won't go through the whole thing, I want to be respectful of your time, but this is the slot, due to the slides that we've had, you know, various community presentations that, you know, it's about a 25, you know, 30-minute presentation. I'll just go through them in 10 minutes, it's okay. I'd much rather make sure we take any time to answer any questions that you have and talk about specific items, um, that are important to you, you know, as the board. So, um, and some of you are well aware of, you know, a lot of these materials as well, but, uh, so, yeah, well, pretty much I haven't memorized. Um, so, just going through, and we'll just jump right to, uh, the facilities challenges and the process that we've gone through with regard to the referendum coming up and, you know, the rationale and how the things were proposed. So, really, the challenges address three key areas. Uh, first and foremost, the growth that we've seen and the growth that we're projecting to see, um, in the, you know, near and distant future. Uh, secondly, safety and security. Uh, the district has made some significant investments already to, uh, all of our school buildings, but there's some additional things, uh, that can still be addressed in the facilities and, and so that's part of this recommendation. Um, and then the third piece, uh, really important piece is our maintenance. And we have a number of deferred maintenance out, um, items, uh, from over the years, uh, that this plan, um, addresses. So, I'd like to kind of talk about each of those three areas, um, with regard to where the recommendation came from. Now, the enrollment projections, this is probably one of the most challenging, uh, pieces that, uh, we've faced as far as working with our school board, working with our various committees, to really look at what data is reliable. So, we've actually had, um, two studies and a third update of our enrollment projections to try to make sure we have the most reliable or the most accurate data that we can work with. So, the numbers on the left, um, are accurate, you know, that, that's what we've seen in the last 10 years, a little bit over 500 students of growth. Uh, to be fair, some of those numbers are open enrollment students, I'll speak to that, you know, briefly, um, and those are numbers that we have slowed down and actually will be decreasing, um, you know, so that, um, that's not really part of the plan moving forward, that we really have looked at what our facility's needs are for our resident students. And that's what the, the plan is based upon, is making sure we have space for our resident students. Uh, and so, the projection of just over 700, uh, for the next, you know, 10 years, again, that's what it is, it's a projection. Uh, we know that that can vary, particularly the longer you go out, there's a lot more variables. You obviously deal with that, you know, on a regular basis with regard to future, you know, and current planning and construction and so on. Um, but that's a number that we've kind of worked off of, that is a very real possibility that we need to be able to accommodate that growth. And particularly, the most important thing is the three buildings, uh, here in Cottage Grove. Taylor Prairie, Cottage Grove School, and, and Glacial Drummond, we expect all three potentially to be overcapacity in this next five years. Now, just a quick clarification of what do we mean by overcapacity? Uh, again, we spent a lot of time with our committees even determining, you'd think it'd be a pretty simple thing, well, the capacity of the school, but it really can vary depending on how you compute that. So, we're looking at really our number of core classrooms and then what we see for optimal size of, you know, number of students in those classrooms. Clearly, you can exceed capacity by increasing class size, but what we've looked at, the numbers that we would like to have for optimal class size, um, and even based upon that, we project then being over. So, just one quick example, uh, Taylor Prairie School. Okay, as we know, Taylor Prairie currently houses 4K, uh, 5K, and first grade. So, in 5K and first grade, we currently have eight sections for each of those, uh, grade levels. And every core classroom is being utilized in that building. So, as soon as we're going to need a ninth section, then that's where we're going to be overcapacity. Now, could we accommodate that in the short term? Sure, we could move some things around, we could, you know, we have some classrooms that are being used by specialists, you know, um, um, you know, special ed teachers, reading teachers, that we could probably reallocate into some different spaces and, and make do on the short term. Or we could increase class size and so, but long-term, obviously, you can only do that for so much. So, that's where we say that we're basically at capacity now, and as soon as we have a few more students that need that ninth section, that's where we'd identify as being overcapacity. Um, and we're in a similar situation at Cottage Grove School. We actually, right now, have one available, uh, classroom at Cottage Grove School and, uh, Glacial Drummond, uh, essentially is at capacity as well. Every core classroom is being utilized, you know, as designed. Um, as far as the safety, well, the first slide, just to clarify, what do we mean by safety upgrades? So, the schools in Cottage Grove all are similar that as far as secure entrances, when we have visitors, they come right, they're buzzed into the office, check in, and then if need be to go into the, you know, school, then they, they can go through the office and, and allowed that way. Where Winnicott School is the one school we still have where we do have it secure and that visitors have to be buzzed in, but then they're right into the hallway as opposed to going into the office first. And so, that's the one, um, upgrade for security in this plan for Winnicott School is to redesign the office so it's connected right to the front entrance, just like the rest of our buildings. Uh, the other building that's in a similar situation is MG 21, which was the old Nichols Elementary School in Monona, uh, same thing that we would like to, uh, create that same type of secure entrance. All right, the maintenance, um, and this chart might be a little bit difficult to read, but this is a pie chart showing in all the district buildings, uh, the, where the work would come from the deferred maintenance. So, we have about $14.8 million of projects have been identified, things like plumbing, HVAC, roofs, windows, um, you know, those are the type of thing when we talk about maintenance items that really aren't core classroom renovations, but it's really, you know, the, the infrastructure piece. Uh, Winnicott School, Monona, by, by far, has the largest number of needs. That building was built in 1963, and even though there's been some updates over the years, um, it really has the highest needs. The plumbing is the original, you know, galvanized piping, um, you know, now, you know, approaching, you know, you know, 50, 60 years old, it, it needs to be replaced. Um, you know, that, you know, in itself is, I believe, about $1.6 million. All the original windows, you know, certainly not energy efficient drafting, just to replace windows in that building is over $2 million. Uh, has some roofing, uh, some HVAC, so, again, that's where that total adds up pretty quickly to just over $8 million in that building. Um, as far as some of the other buildings, uh, there's not nearly those, those high needs, but there's some in every building. Cottage Grove School, um, again, has, um, some, you know, roofing updates, um, as well as, well, the HVAC was done a couple of years ago, so that's in a good place. Um, and, um, I think that's the primary piece at, at that one. And, and so, um, you might look at the high school and say, well, where did $3 million come from? That school's about 20 years old. Well, it's got three boilers that need to be replaced, and so that is the core cost of the high school plus roofs. But, um, those are deferred maintenance items and, and it's one of those things that, over the years, um, you know, I've been asked a question, well, has, you know, there been some irresponsible planning in it? It, it really hasn't, and you face the same challenges in the village. You have, you know, limits on your budget and the board has always historically made choices about if there's a choice and objects can be put on hold, it's always put into the classroom first to make sure that we have decent class sizes and, and, you know, the staffing. Right now, in our overall budget of about $41 million, I think about 77% of it is on staffing. And, uh, and so, over time, these things add up and, and, uh, and that's where we're at right now.
Andy, just some pictures of some issues in Winnicott.
Okay, so, where did the recommendation come from? So, back in 2015 is when we did our original enrollment study. We hired Vandoval and Associates. The reason we hired Vandoval is that they had previously done some work, um, in Cottage Grove. They've worked with a number of other county municipalities and school districts, and in their study, they'll look at things like birth rates and so on, but they also will look at the actual, you know, planning, you know, plant destruction and so on, and take that into account in their projections. So, when they do their study, it's a 20-year study, again, with the idea that the projections in the early years are a lot more accurate. You get 20 years out, they'll give us a low and a high end, and that original study showed that for the entire district in 20 years, it could be, um, enrollment increase from about 1,000 students to 2,000. Obviously, that's a really wide variance. Um, and so, two years later, we had them update the study, look at their original projections, adjust them, and then we had a second study also done by UW's Applied Population Lab, where they'd use a little bit different methodology, where they're really just looking at the demographic information and birth rates and so on. Vandoval incorporated that into their revised study, and so, um, again, it is what it is, it's projections, but it's based on a lot of really good data to give us a pretty good, you know, projection of, of where, you know, we are going in the future. So, they, we did the enrollment study, we also had a facility study done at the same time where we hired an architectural firm and construction management firm to come in and do an assessment of all of our buildings. That's where the list of, of maintenance items came from, the original list of over 14 million. Uh, we've updated it since then. And so, really, that group, we had a long-range facilities planning committee, that group put together, you know, here are the challenges with facilities, here's what we see as projected growth, and then, from there, the board in, uh, 2017, put together a new committee, an advisory committee, to really come up with a solution. Okay, we have all this information, now what are we going to do about it? And so, that committee met, um, for about over a 10-month period, uh, to look at all kinds of options with regard to what to do with the facilities. Ultimately, uh, this recommendation that, or the proposed referendum is actually the work of that committee. They made the recommendation to our school board and our board, um, accepted, um, you know, the, pretty much as is the committee recommendation. Okay. Um, one of the things to help with that final recommendation was a community survey. So, that was mailed to every, uh, resident in the school district, and when the committee came up with their kind of preliminary recommendation, they actually identified about $87 million of potential needs, uh, between the, um, to accommodate the growth, the maintenance, and then some, also some classroom renovations and athletic fields. And then, based upon the survey, uh, is where we landed on reducing that down to $57 million. And so, the purpose of the survey was really to test the preliminary recommendation of the committee, not to really look at feedback for additional, you know, options. Uh, the committee had already gone through that, but really, what do you think about these options and how much do you believe the community, you know, would support? Uh, and so, that's really what it came down to, that the survey did show that there was support to go to referendum, to build a new elementary school to accommodate the future growth, um, and that would be a grade three through five building here in Cottage Grove. And then, also, the highest priorities were the maintenance, um, and the safety and security. So, the things that came off the list were, again, athletic fields, that would have been a nice-to-have thing, um, certainly, you know, at some point, we still wanted to address that. Um, and we're talking about outdoor athletic fields. We've got great partnerships with both the village of Cottage Grove and the city of Monona where we share, um, fields, but in a perfect world, we would have our own athletic facilities, you know, connected to one of the schools. Uh, then, secondly, there are a number of renovations to kind of improve classroom environments that were taken off, that, again, would be nice to have, but certainly not the most critical, you know, priorities. And so, ultimately, we ended up with these two, uh, pieces. Um, and I've kind of went through those already, you're well aware if you've read any of the literature, you know, that we've sent out. Uh, just to clarify, that there's two questions on the ballot, um, you know, as you're probably aware, the, 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 uh, state legislature has, has changed some of the referendum rules over the last couple of years, and so, now, we're limited to a total number of two questions per calendar year. And so, you, you know, might wonder, well, why don't we split up the facilities into a couple of parts and say, here's a question about a new school, here's a question about, you know, maintenance, we can't any longer, we can only have a total of two. And the second question is an operational one. So, the first one is the authority for the school board to borrow $57 million for the facilities. The second is to operate the proposed new school. Um, you know, as you know, anytime you bring a new school online, uh, there's additional operating costs. You've got your utility costs, and then your staffing costs for building and grounds, some sort of administration, student services, and so on. It's not for hiring additional teachers, we already have the teachers, you know, for the students and, um, but those would be the, the projected original operational costs for an additional school. And so, that's a separate question, basically giving the board the authority to levy an additional $930,000, or levy or not, between levy or state aid, but to exceed revenue limits by that amount. Okay, and this is just a little bit different breakdown by building. This includes not only the maintenance I talked about, but some renovations. I mentioned that we had that original $87 million total, it was scaled way back, but there are still some renovations to classrooms in this, a total of just over $7 million. Cottage Grove School getting the vast majority of those. Again, if you're familiar with, uh, district, uh, schools, Cottage Grove School, um, has some of the oldest classrooms, has some of the original cabinetry and sinks and so on that, that really need to be updated. Uh, an example, we now have, you know, two art, a need for two art rooms. We have one really nice art room, but the second one is, you know, held in the cafeteria. Um, and so, you know, to do a small renovation for a classroom for a second art room, that will also allow us to use the entire cafeteria, you know, as it was designed. Okay, the grade configuration is something that we spent a lot of time on. Ultimately, this is not part of the referendum, but our board felt it was really important that people understood before they voted, what would the grade configuration look like? And our board decided to stick with kind of the current practice, which we call our transition, where students start at Taylor Prairie, they move on to Cottage Grove School, and then to the proposed new school in 35. One of the most important things that our committee and board really, I think, were united on early on is whatever solution we have, it had to involve having our fifth graders attend an elementary school. That solved the space issue of Glacial Drummond, and it also had our, uh, fifth grade students in the elementary center where they really belong. And so, that's, uh, was a big rationale for how we proposed, you know, this grade configuration. Okay, uh, really important piece then, of course, the tax impact. And, um, so, on the first question for the $57 million, the, uh, maximum tax impact that you would see would be $29 for $100,000 of property value, I should say, maximum estimated, um, amount. Um, and then, for the second question for the operational, would be an additional $46 per $100,000 of value, so our total is 75. Now, a quick glance at those numbers, you say, well, how could the facilities for $57 million be a lesser impact than the operational of just under a million? Uh, so, one of the reasons that number is lower is because we do have debt falling off. Uh, the high school is entering its 20th year, our final payment on the high school will be next May, and so, that goes into part of the timing of this referendum as well as an opportunity to do it at the times when debt falls off to minimize the tax impact. Uh, proposed, or, you know, to potential timeline. So, if the referendum were to pass, there's actually a full year of planning before any, would be, you know, breaking ground. As you know, we'd be, have a lot of work to do with the village with regard to the proposed site for the new school, um, right now is in the town of Cottage Grove. Uh, we would definitely petition the village for annexation, um, so that process would have to happen. Obviously, we have to go through your plan commission and have all these site plans approved, and so, it's a good full year of planning, uh, process with the idea that if we could get all that done, actually break down, uh, break ground in the spring of 2020, and then, the school would open in the fall of, uh, 2021. Likewise, even the renovations and, and things with the deferred maintenance, there'd be quite a planning period to make sure that all the design is done, all the competitive bidding, um, and then the work really can't get done until the, the summertime, it's difficult to do some of that work while students are present. Some work could get done that first summer, but the majority would be the following summer. So, it's really about a three-year process. Okay. Um, so, I think I went through a little, took a little longer than I intended, apologize if that got a little lengthy, but, uh, so, why don't I just stop there and, again, take questions or comments and anything in particular that, you know, of interest of you personally, but certainly as board members that you'd like to talk about tonight?
We did have one gentleman that asked to speak on this subject, Steve Campbell. If you could come up to the podium here and just-
Sure.
...identify yourself and, uh, take about three minutes or so if you could.
Sure. My name's Steve Campbell, I'm a resident of Cottage Grove, and I went to, um, Brian's presentation, um, which was an expanded version of this a couple days ago. And one thing that jumped out at me was the, the whole issue of the location of this proposed, um, new elementary school, grades three through five. Um, and if you look at the, the plot, the proposed location, the only access to that location is Bus Road, one and only access. Keep an eye, these are kids three to five, grades three to five. That means nobody, no kid's going to walk or ride a bike to that school if that's the only access to the school. Also, we need to think about, again, if that's the only access to the school, uh, what's that going to mean for the intersection of Bus Road and Cottage Grove Road, morning and night, as those buses are coming and going and parents are coming and going, dropping their kids and picking them up. So, I think those are real issues, um, and I'm, I'm wondering about being asked to vote for this school before we've, um, had the, uh, the village and the school board have had the opportunity to work together and identify some, uh, what I think are needed changes or additions to access to that, that plot, that new school. Uh, I think there's a, a significant responsibility on behalf of the village and the school board to come up with some options other than Bus Road to reach that school, whether it's along Damascus and then to the left, back Damascus into that site, um, or however you folks, you guys are the experts, uh, come up with some other alternatives. But, that's just my point, is you're asking us to vote on a, on a location for a new school with what I think is unsatisfactory access at this point. So, really, I'm here tonight to, to encourage you, the board, and you, the school district, to address those issues promptly, really fast, before this, um, vote. I think it behooves the school district and the village to know what's going to happen there before we vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members? We only had one person. Steve, ready to speak?
Dan, uh, appreciate your time, not only tonight, but in the past, you're always, you and Jared and the school board has always made themselves available. The question I have is, has the school board discussed if this referendum does pass, if the five-year operational referendum that we're currently in, year three, if that's going to be continuing on and requested from taxpayers in next year or the following year?
Yeah, I can, there's not been formal discussion, uh, well, there has in the context as we discuss budget. So, what I can tell you is, as John said, the current operational referendum sunsets after five years, so that's in 2021, and to remind everyone, that was, uh, to exceed the revenue limit, um, by 2.6 million for our overall budget. And so, it will have to be addressed at that time, and the big, you know, the determining factor about what happens will of course be what's in place with, uh, the state finance at, at that time. So, I would say, I'm comfortable in saying that if state finance doesn't change much from where it is right now as far as the amount of aid we get and where the current revenue limits are, that would be likely that we would look at a referen- renew that for a similar amount. If state finance changes, then it could change, you know, either direction. If all of a sudden there's additional, um, flexibility with state financing, it could be a referendum for a lower amount or not at all. But I, to be honest, it's likely it would be renewed at some amount or proposed.
Can I ask, what is our current debt load for this school? Or for the district?
Yep. Um, so, currently, um, our debt that we have for, um, referendum approved is just for eight more years. So, in May of 2019, the high school will be paid off, and then, um, May of 2034, we will have, uh, pay off, I'm sorry, not 34, but 26, we will have, um, GDS paid off. And so, we're entering this fiscal year at $41 million of debts, and when we make our payments throughout this fiscal year, we'll be down to $36 million.
And, and what effect would the, the referendum passing for 70, 57 million have on that debt load?
So, then, what that would do is it would, we would add that 57 million to that, but that would be spread over the 20 years. So, this 36 is really for the remaining, um, eight years that we have, and then we would expand that. So, I, I don't have it on a PowerPoint, but we do have a graph here that it, it's hard to see from where you're at, but at least the color-wise. So, the dark colors are, represents our existing debt that we have, and then the, the shaded in areas where we would apply the new $57 million. So, you can see here where this line is, that would be the mill rate that would be associated, our estimated mill rate associated with the debt. So, that's where you're seeing that that first increase, but then as debt is paid off, and then we have remaining, eventually, we get to that point where we do not have the existing debt that's on top of it, so that's why we're only seeing a 29 cent increase. And actually, updated information that I haven't even had the opportunity to share with Dan is, we've been given our, um, property values, and so, the 29 cents that we're using is actually down to 24 cents because of, we saw the 4% growth in property values, and we've been using 2%. So, realistically, instead of coming back through and making changes, we're already starting to see some of those numbers that we've shared out come in lower than higher.
So, initially, we'll be in debt for about $98 million?
Um, $98 million initially, and then each year it continues to decrease, just like your mortgage.
Um, in reference to growth of enrollment, it appears like most of the growth is through open enrollment. You know, uh, between 2007, '08 to 2012, '13, there was 7% growth, 1% through growth within the community. 2012 to 2017, it was 10 and a half percent growth total, 8.3% within the district. So, if I take the growth between 2017 and 2022 projected, if it's just within the community, it's 26.7% growth. If it's between open enrollment and projected growth, it's 13%. So, I guess I wonder, why do we need all the open enrollment costing us all more money, more facilities?
Yep. Great question. So, it's absolutely accurate that, that first five years, the majority of that growth was open enrollment. The second five years, you've noticed that, and I, I believe your presentations are probably correct, um, it's slowed way down. So, the last five years, we've really limited the open enrollment as the resident growth has increased, and then the projections, and this plan is based upon resident growth- has increased, and then the projections, and this plan is based upon resident growth only. And so the number of open enrollment is actually gonna continue to decrease, okay, as our resident increases. So for instance, at the high school, we've, that's where the majority of our open enrollment students are, because we still have additional capacity of over two-hundred students. So historically, every ninth grader that applied into the district, we've accepted their application, because we've had space. The last two years, we've had larger incoming freshman classes, and so we did not accept any open enrollment at the high school. Even though we still have the space, it would've meant hiring additional teachers to accommodate those students, and so we didn't take any. And so those numbers over the next couple of years are gonna continue to decline as far as the number of open enrollment compared to the number of resident students. And so again, this plan is to provide space based upon the projected resident growth only. And that's one of the decisions the committee made early on, is when they got that information that showed both resident and open enrollment, we looked at the information only for residents moving forward. So currently, and Jared can speak to this better than I about the exact amount, while you have space, the revenue that's brought in for open enrollment exceeds the cost to educate those kids. Clearly, though, it doesn't make sense to build buildings, there's not enough revenue that way. And so as the buildings fill up, the amount of open enrollment that has decreased.
We did have one other person just registered to speak in favor, Alex Gersson?
I'll circle the vote.
Oh, thank you. They ran again, sorry.
No comment here. Thank you for being here, everybody. Real quick, in your presentation, you mentioned, you're not with the new buildings, you mentioned you're not adding new teachers with the new, new elementary school.
Right.
The new elementary school passes. So you have enough teachers, you're not adding new teachers. The second referendum is to cover the cost of running the building. So in adding, how are we fixing then student-to-teacher ratios if you're just sort of, you're not fixing student-teacher ratios? More room doesn't fix that. It's more teachers.
Yeah.
So what I, what I didn't see in a lot of this stuff, and most of my comments is really it's, you know, what is the education value that we're getting at? What is the, what is the goal, the objective, the business of education? Yes, we need new buildings, yes, we need things, pens, papers, sinks. Ultimately, you know, the new building isn't solving the student-teacher ratio. That'll have to come later. You did say it was gonna add administration staff, which was gonna increase admin costs, further decreasing the percentage that we're actually spending towards the kids. So that's where I'm just sort of confused, that this is ultimately not directed towards benefiting the student population. That's sort of, do you wanna talk about that?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be glad to. I need to, that was, that is what I said, I didn't say it very clearly. So if a new school comes online, so right now, for instance, in our third, fourth, and fifth grades in Cottage Grove, we have seven sections per grade. So if the new building were to open at the same number of students, those three grades would move into that building with the same teachers. If the enrollment grows, that we need an eighth section, and each teacher will be hired to maintain the exact same class size ratio. But the operating referendum question does not pay for those teachers. We pay for that teacher out of our normal operating budget, because the more students we have, then the more aid and revenue, their revenue limit increases with that. So we can afford to pay for additional teachers as enrollment grows, but the, what it doesn't cover are those additional costs of the utilities, administration costs. So by administration, we're meaning adding a principal, okay, to the building. Student services, when we talk about like things like school counselors, okay, for that, in the long run, to split things, you know, counselors, reading teachers, and things like that, some of those would be some additional, so because instead of having traveling teachers, that's where some of those other costs, you know, would come in for that nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. But the teaching core ratio, those would, you know, stay the same, and that would be paid out of their operating budget. Say that clearly.
Any other board members?
So the study that I looked at, the crowding, the overcrowding, the company that did that, did they look at just what the district needed or what our communities needed?
I'm not sure I completely follow, so.
Well, 'cause we're two separate communities, even though we're one district, we're two communities. And so when they did their study as far as what the schools needed, did they look into maybe like Cottage Grove, sure, we may have more younger kids, but is the elementary school here gonna help our community? As opposed to in Monona, where they have a high school and an elementary school? What would've been the effect of making the high school a middle school and building a high school here?
Okay. Well, those decisions were left to our committee members. The consultants who did the studies, you know, for, I'm sure it's come about the enrollment study or the, you know, the facilities piece, but the enrollment studies were based upon our board policy for class size and based on the space. With regard to, you know, the maintenance, I mean, that's pretty straightforward, looking at maintenance of buildings. But as far as then, the recommendations about what to do as far as renovations, new buildings and so on, those decisions were, recommendations were made from our advisory committee, from our community members to the board. So I would, I think to answer your question directly, no, none of the consultants that the district used made any recommendations towards, you know, that sort of thing.
So they were just looking at the district as opposed to what the community might be better for the communities?
Correct. Absolutely. It was focused on students and district.
And then if the, if the new elementary school does get approved, and I know you'll be coming forward to the village, to the plan commission and all that, but are the plans to make the new elementary school able to be built on to future growth?
Yeah.
So that we don't get stuck with another?
Yeah. Great, great question. And that was something that both the advisory committee and the school board have made, you know, really clear, that if we build a new school, it's gotta have the capacity for expansion. Because that's the issue that we've had with our current buildings, that we all, I think, or many of us, run the impression that there were plans to be able to add on, and when then now comes the time to look to do it, we can't without increasing other costs. For instance, the gym's not big enough to accommodate more students, the cafeterias, the halls, you know, those common spaces. And so what the board has, you know, directed us to do, again, it came from the committee originally, is that this proposed new school would have an initial capacity of just over six-hundred students, but those common spaces need to be large enough to accommodate, you know, up to seven-hundred. So you could add on, you know, classrooms in the future.
In addition, where you're putting into the building on the property too is gonna be a factor, like it's not gonna be cooperating.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
I guess I have one, one other question specifically. How will test scores go up with our students with new facilities and renovated facilities?
I can be honest and say, well, that has, with new facilities, that really has no impact on test scores.
Because first and foremost, we're, we're educating our children.
Absolutely. So I think having updated and new facilities provides, provides safe learning environments. Certainly, we want them conducive to learning, and so, I mean, is there indirectly, or directly, I guess for that matter, an impact on student achievement perhaps? But based upon the facilities that we have right now, we believe that our learning environments now are satisfactory. You know, the majority of this referendum is about the additional space and the maintenance. The amount for the upgraded classroom spaces is pretty minimal. So I, just to be honest, we're in a pretty good place right now with those. It's the type of thing that we need to update some spaces before they do tier it to the point that they're really not conducive, you know, to learning. But just to, you know, I mentioned that the example of the art room. As far as a core classroom space, what, you know, might look differently, it's really just having, you know, ability to have some flexible furniture and, you know, accommodate how teachers teach, but it's not a major portion.
Any other teachers in the district?
I do. Live in the village.
One more for me. How does three transitions or, I guess, two tran, three transitions compared to none affect the kids?
Yeah, that's, and that was a really difficult conversation that our board had with regard to what to do with those grade configurations. So I think everyone realizes additional transitions are not optimal, to have students transition to three different schools before they get into middle school. And we've, the district's always had that sort of model, and so I think our staff works really hard to minimize, you know, and it means a lot of communication, you know, between buildings, you know, to accommodate those smooth transitions. But there, and so that was certainly the downside of having that model. But there's also a challenge, if, if you don't do that, that means then creating neighborhood schools, and where you said attendance boundaries. So the challenge there you have is having equity amongst the buildings, and then that, you know, that communication between those schools to make sure we have, you know, similar learning experiences, and then you're trying to balance, you know, the enrollment of each as things change, you know, so that those can be done, but it'll create challenges. So ultimately, you know, I think the board's settled on this configuration because that's what we've had, and at this point, they didn't really wanna go on the road of having to create attendance boundaries and, you know, the challenges that that presents.
Okay. Anybody else? Dan, Jared, thank you very much. I mean, whether you support the referendum or not, you guys have done an outstanding job trying to keep everybody informed and answer a whole ton of questions.
Thank you. Really appreciate your time, and I'll also be, you know, afterwards too, if there's other questions, yeah, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to six B, Madison United Rugby, Jeremy Holiday. Jeremy?
Just thinking of the things that happened.
Okay.
Sure.
Not sure what that is.
Amber. It was an amber. Yeah. It's just like.
Can't be a silver, they're providing a lot.
The alert account. It's morning.
Building meeting was everything together. Building.
Lee, did you get my email? Your email's kind of low. I had to, I take those other.
Oh, okay. You want them in paper or? Here we go.
Looks like John Madden.
Yeah. I liked it.
Email needs to be.
I've got it, need it right.
Demonstration for us?
Oh, yeah. Should I wait for folks to get back?
No.
You can wait.
Okay. Good evening, Ace. My name is Jeremy Holiday. I'm the president of Madison United Rugby. I'm here at the invitation of the board and also my own initiative to give you a brief presentation about three main items. One, what Madison United Rugby is. Two, what we are doing right now, and three, what we hope to do in the future. I hope tonight, oh, tonight is designed to be the first step of a process of reintegrating what we do as an organization with what the village is doing in planning, restarting a conversation that's been, has fallen off a little bit in the past years, and also to start a formal process, Lee and I talked about it in gym as well, to take the massive agreement that exists between Madison United Rugby and the village of Cottage Grove and update that and modify it to what it works at present. I have about fifteen minutes worth of talking, and I have sort of a general overview. And I don't, I will talk at you for a bit, but feel free at any point, I don't know exactly what the rules are, but if you have a question you would like to ask about something that I say, I'm happy to talk about it. I just presented this as a structure to have a conversation. So, I often get asked this all the time, so I just start from the beginning. Madison United Rugby is a nonprofit organization that owns and manages Wisconsin Rugby Sports Complex located at Backing Park. It's also a nonprofit organization that manages all of the rugby that happens in Madison. There was a time in the past when Madison United Rugby had a board and organization, and the sports complex had its own board organization. They are now one single entity. In general, our membership consists of three adult club teams, that's individuals over the age of eighteen competing in the national rugby business. I have some folks with me today, Mike McKeeverly there at the back, there, and next to him is Jake, our Jake, the director. In front of them is actually a member of our board. Mike plays every once in a while. Jake and I are actually active players. And so the three teams are the Wisconsin Rugby Club, which is an adult men's team, the Wisconsin Women's Rugby Football Club, which is a women's team, and the Madison Minotaurs, which is an IGR team, it's international gay rugby. They are predominantly but not exclusively gay men. It was a team that I helped found ten years ago. It also includes the UW teams. Since the UW teams are not part of a larger NCAA structure here in Wisconsin, they are part of us. We do all the funding and donations and stuff. They often play at the university, but they often play at our spaces as well, and we sort of handle most of their organizational stuff. There are currently five bicycle teams. This goes up and down depending on the success of a club or the presence of a coach. There are, there's also one middle school rugby team, which is in the Oregon-Studenham area. The guy who runs that is Rick Burden. And there's hope to expand it. It's relatively new in our world, having rugby there. And there are, we have flag rugby for folks younger than middle school, I know, and there have been as many as four and as little as one site over here. I often get asked this question too, it's a bit of a pedantic slide, but our governance, right? We are run by a nine-member board, and it's elected in staggered fashion, so like five people one year, four people the next year, so we're not gonna have to come all at the same time. There are three reps which come from our member clubs. One from the high school teams, they sort of, the presidents of those folks vote for someone. Same is true with the two UW teams, and the adult teams as well, the three of them vote for a representative. And then the rest of the members, which are five, or sorry, six, are elected by the board itself, they're sort of members of the bunch. We also, as sort of a residual tail, have a membership rep, which is a non-moting member whose main role is to communicate with the teams, like the team communicates that person, that person sends out information, sort of like a class secretary, I should say. We have officers, four standard officers, they're elected yearly for the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and as per the bylaws, the president of the board is also the president and essentially sole executive of the organization itself. We also have the executive director, who is currently Mr. Jake Winkler, right there, which is currently in Kansas. I have a question slide. So it, should we formalize in the, in the coming months or so, a relationship between the village board and our board? I know we talk, and I know we have an agreement, but would it make sense, this is a general question, to have, to have representation from the, someone from the village be part of what we do and to have some of us be a part of what you do? You can think about it, you don't have to answer it. I just know that, I mean, I know you guys have the village and town joint meeting every year, which is a festification. And I, I do like that it's an opportunity for everyone to come and have a big public discussion about what they care about and what they wanna do. And I think that, looking back over the past ten years, we probably could've benefited a little more from that, something to think about as we go forward. We even, even if something as simple as like sending a representative three or four times a year back and forth to make sure we are talking about stuff. So just so you know, our yearly budget at the sports complex is about thirty thousand dollars. We take in about thirty thousand dollars. It takes about thirty thousand dollars to operate it. Jake's position is currently funded by donors. It's, it's at thirty thousand dollars in donations, but it only ends up being less twenty-six thousand dollars in pay, and then the rest is to cover the payroll expenses. Now, to step two, which is today. I took over the presidency about four months ago, and the things that I'm, these are sort of things that I'm working on right now. One, a committee expansion, and this is terribly stimulating, but over the years, there are four or five committees which are outlined in the bylaws which exist, like communications going to grounds and things like that, and they've all sort of shrunk down to one or two people. So there was one dedicated work force doing a lot of work. So what I've been doing is giving more people to those committees and expanding those committees so they can do a lot more work. Also, community connection. All of us sitting over there, I have never followed a bunch of times, and we've been just trying to reach out to, first, the chamber and other members in Cottage Grove and the surrounding areas to make ourselves much more enmeshed in things that go on here. There is just honestly an insularity which I do with in my organization. I think it happens historically because we were all just a bunch of misfits playing rugby at Pitcher's Pub under the overpass for twenty years. So as we integrate into larger society, I have to push especially some of the older folks. You can just ask them for money, or ask them to participate, or invite them in to come to our games, they'll enjoy it. And third is development of M R systems, which just means, I mean, like you as part of this organization know who to talk to for what and what permit needs to go where, and part of And part of what we're trying to do as an organization is develop those things for ourselves. Like who's in, like what is our equipment maintenance schedule? What is our, we're putting together a marketing deck. So when we want to, when any team wants to host a tournament, they can have a large package of information of all the marketing details and do things like that. So that whoever is in a position or is ever in a particular role, there's lots of processes written down and followed that they can do. Also, in 2016, we started our Clubhouse 2020 campaign, which is like the final fundraising push to raise money and build a clubhouse on the facility. And so, I mean, right now, we're finalizing the plan and design of that building. Fundraising, which is a lot of what we're doing now. So currently, we have 1.15 million dollars in Edward Jones. Mike Millidge manages our stuff. He's a great guy. I'm sure you'll probably know him. He's a super cheerleader. Just a breakdown of that, about 950, that is from two lead donors. Individuals who have saved up some money, sold some properties and donated that to us. And 200,000 has come from like about eighty or so sustaining donors. People that give as, I mean, as small as five dollars a month and as big as about 200. There is folks that give yearly. We use a nonprofit serum called Kindful, which I happen to find. It's a small company out of Nashville. And it's allowed us to do internet marketing and then have people contribute monthly through PayPal and set stuff up. And it tracks all the data and makes all the generating reports super easy. A conservative estimate based on what we have now is that by the end of 2019, we should have 1.38 million. And when, as I chopped this number around to a couple of people today, they're like, oh, that's too low. Definitely get more. Which is probably true, but based on current commitments and current giving patterns, if nothing else changes, I can guarantee we'll have that by the end of 2019. Current, Mike McGevelly back there. I put him in charge of what I refer to as the dream team. I'm just having some fun. I've got a bunch of folks, like some folks who were involved in the original 2008 building of things. Some folks who are doing a lot of work now and representation across the different clubs to essentially do what has not yet been effectively done, which is to take essentially about six different designs and many different plans and come up with a single building plan with a single business plan to go with it and then a single fundraising plan if they need it. My goal personally, and only one person on the board, is to use the money that we have to build a building. Even in, have some of that left over to give to other things or certain endowments or something like that. I'm not personally interested, I, I don't think that setting up a huge fundraising goal over the next year is going to be all that important. And I think from a number of the plans that have come across my desk, there are a lot of fantastic things we can build for 1.1, 1.2, 3 million dollars. Mike McGevelly's group, who's, he's in charge of the committee that's doing this, the dream team. They will submit work to the board by November 11th, which is coming up. And from that, you know, like that will be as consolidated as it had at that point. He's indicating to me that it might be closer to two plans as opposed to one, which means we have to do some more back and forth. But it'll be closer to a final design than we've had since that day. And so one of the reasons why I'm coming here at this particular point is there are elements of the original agreement which talk about things we put into that building. So as we're finalizing that building, I want to make sure that we're doing things that are helpful and that you like. And then if there's, if there's back and forth between us about what this building looks like. I mean, it was originally conceived as, it's been conceived as many things. A solely rugby building, a public-private partnership. Regardless of that, like we will have in our facility, in this community, and we should all have, you know, a say in what goes into it. And so that's part of the reason why. So I put this in, we use it for marketing stuff, but I also think it just helps give a sense of what the sports complex does. So over the course, in 2017, there were sixty-one eighty-minute rugby games played in this facility. There were eight tournaments as well. And I highlight the ones in bold, the Big Ten Sevens and the Midwest Collegiate Men and Women's Semifinals and Finals are both collegiate tournaments, which means that they're primarily from the Midwest, but also from other parts of the country. Those are things that drop people from out of the city and state and region to Cottage Grove to roll in the mud and hit each other and throw a ball around. And it's something that we've, you know, like when we can, the place we had before this was the Crossroads, which was right down the street from the dump. And it was an upgrade from the place we were playing with at the dump. So it is a huge step forward for all of us. And the idea that we would, as rugby players, have a destination that is our home was, has always been a dream. And having collegiate teams come and play is part of that. It's also when you think about what the sports complex is doing and can do, it, I mean, it draws people from out of state here. And that's, that's out of state interest, that's out of state prestige, that's out of state money, all that stuff. And there's a lot that we can do with that. In a year, about thirteen thousand people come. And we don't have like sophisticated enough tracking to tell like how many of those are unique individuals. Like I, there's probably like, you know, like Jake's out in there probably, you know, every time he plays. You know, there, there, there's a sense, like we don't know exactly how many visitors are. We haven't gathered that data. But based on the amount of people that play, the times we collect tickets, that's about how much we get here. And when we talk to folks about advertising, that's the number that we're going to do. This is today, tomorrow. So there's a lot of things we dream about, but I've tried to make it succinct. And I'll just read what I wrote. The long division is Madison United Rugby serves as an exemplary rugby and sports organization in the region and the nation. As I talked about before, there's the organization itself which handles people and there, and historically, there, and there's the complex itself. And MUR handles both of those things, but we need to do both. So there's like both me serving all of the athletes that are playing and all the high school students and all those folks and the organization itself as well as the complex. Because we can, I mean, as one of our past residents, I said when I talked to him, like, we can achieve all of our goals without a clubhouse because we have grass and we have people. And that commit, I always wanted to make sure I maintain that in there. Also, a goal is that Wisconsin Rugby Sports Complex is a locally and nationally known sports venue that draws attention, people and money to Cottage Grove. We, when we talk about it, I mean, we love playing at this place. And we are partial to the fact that we, it is like, we think it's one of the best places to play rugby in the country. There are, like if you, I'm sure you haven't, but if you ever want to Google the rugby field of Germany, there is this absolutely fantastically beautiful rugby pitch south of Anchorage in Alaska. That is, I mean, it literally, as you play, the mountains are behind you. We have no mountains. We can't do that. And it's beautiful. But even there, the one thing that we have, you will see almost nowhere, is two pitches side by side and eventually a clubhouse in the middle. So that you can go in, go upstairs, grab a beer and watch two matches at the same time. And there, there's, I mean, there are places that have multiple fields. They're often spread out and the clubhouse isn't in the center. There's, there's a sort of unique field that was to ours that was designed since the very beginning. So I have like a, just like a rough timeline. So initially, we're finishing the design for the clubhouse, doing the final fundraising push for that. We started to like do sponsorship felt for the first time. It's about a year and a half old or so, maybe even less than that. Although we still have signs up on our pitch, which we thought was, I don't know, going to be challenging and has not been. We're like, you want to buy a sign? And they say, sure. And they're, oh, it's, I mean, it's, you know, it's this amount of money. I'm like, oh, that's. And I said, oh, well, we need to do a little more work at that. But anyway, it was as far as, I mean, we immediately sold out our first section, the head of sales and the second section, so it was pretty successful. Youth rugby expansion. There's, there's a dream that I've talked with, yeah. I talked with Paula about it, some of the folks that do high school. Like we, we would love in the near future to have like the best rugby program in the state to be in Cottage Grove. We, it's like, we always talk about how, I mean, and some of it's historically that like, you know, the, the teams that are like, such like Oregon-Stoughton and Middleton and West are just, they've just been around a lot longer. And we, you know, we were involved, people who played before were involved in that before we came here. But we, I mean, we would love, that's something that we want to do. And so it's like a goal that we, that we work on, like expanding, getting a team here, getting that team developed, getting a youth program that goes from flag to middle school to high school. So that it's something that, you know, anybody who knows, probably will know that Cottage Grove is where it happens. So in 2020, we built a clubhouse. The park department expands back in park possibly, including a wonderful splash pad and structure. We expand usage. So we build a clubhouse, we, we start having bigger tournaments. I mean, there's just like a, there's just a little bit of a wall that we hit into because we don't have locker rooms. We don't have like places where they can, we don't have like, we have like a tower. We don't have like a whole press area. But once we get the building and get that built, there's a lot more we can accomplish. It would be great also, I mean, to have a major partnership, like a major sponsorship, like, I mean, just without names, but you know, like, it, it becomes landmark field or, you know, we've, we've often talked about naming it or having a big sponsor of the place. And we, now I think is the time to do something like that. Also, from the fundraising point, to have a sustaining program in place. And there's sort of like an international rugby standard, I would say, called like the Quit a Month, right? Like if you've ever, like if, in this sort of the English model, like if you played rugby at so-and-so town in, you know, outside of London, once you're done playing, you donate like, you know, ten or, you know, twenty pounds a month. And, and once you have hundreds of those people, that's essentially how you sustain a lot of your budget. And we have certainly a lot of old boys that give, or old boys are over thirty-five, who've played before, or old girls. But it would be nice to, we have plans to build it into like either having membership in this clubhouse, membership in the park, or having lots of people giving small amounts on a regular basis. So, you know, if you imagine that budget as a pie chart, we just have sort of an expanding bit about sustaining. Because as we move to a place where we have, take some money to operate it, we want to make sure we have that built in place. Five years in the future, we host a national tournament. There's a national tournament every spring. It's usually held in Denver, Colorado. Certainly, both of our teams have been there before. It is a fun, rip-roaring, good time. It is like what we all work for every Saturday, digging our noses in the dirt. The Wisconsin Rugby Club, we hosted it here one time before. We actually had most of our games at Bree Stevens back in the day. But it would be great to host it here. The Minotaurs, so IGR teams compete biennially in the Bingham Cup, named after Mark Bingham, who brought it in 1993 in Pennsylvania, was a gay rugby player from San Francisco. And it's expanded so much. It's like the single biggest amateur rugby tournament in the world that they now have like an off-year tournament, which are done regionally. So like every two years, it's international. And in the off-year, there are regional tournaments popping up all over the globe. There are several in the United States. And so when I talk to them about what they imagine doing, we'd be hosting one of those regional tournaments, you know, and hosting it semi-regularly. So being able to have a clubhouse, a community relationship to make a really solid bid to do that on a regular basis. And just, and I don't know how to explain it, but like to have rugby enmeshed in what Cottage Grove does. We already, we already have, like if we measure our Venn diagrams cross over a little bit, I mean, I think ultimately in the future, we want those Venn diagrams to be crossed over even more. Like this fall, we had a community day. Melissa was there. Some other folks were there. You know, just the idea of creating the Saturday space at the rugby facility to be a fun place that people want to come. Maybe you watch, maybe you just, you know, drink beer, eat rocks and chat with people. But it becomes like a, you know, a classic third space in Cottage Grove on the weekends. I mean, because we're there when we're home, playing home. We're there from nine in the morning till five in the evening and having a good time most of the time. Questions? So one, like what else do you guys want to know about MUR at this point? And two, some rhetorical is, what is the next step for MUR and the village to work? And I know some of that, as I, as I talked to Lee on the phone a little bit this week, is like setting up, you know, a formal meeting where we start to talk about what we're going to do about the agreement and going forward. But it's an open question to you. This is my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. And Lee, anything regarding the agreement?
No. Jeremy and I wanted the opportunity to give you a broad overview, which I think he did and is greatly appreciated. He knows our concerns and so he and I plan to get together with staff in the near future to sit down and just say, well, okay, where do we start? What sections do we want to work on and, and go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Do you, do you get money from the tournaments when they're here?
Yeah. Yeah, so there are a couple ways we do that. So currently, so like it, there's a collegiate tournament that's going to come in. And so they rent space from us and we will, and so that's money we get. And we also collect, usually collect gate fees from folks that come in. And that's essentially part of our operating costs for the year. You know, we have, the more tournaments we have, the easier it is to make that budget.
I guess I kind of wanted to get the board's feeling about the agreement. I mean, we've all got an email to us. I'm wondering if, and Lee, feel free to chime in, but if we want to just simplify and start fresh? Or do we want to work with the existing agreement that's in place? I mean, that, that was an agreement to purchase the land from the village.
I think there's, Jim, there's elements of it that will probably reappear. But I think that when Jeremy and I talked, he just both said, well, let's not go in with any preconceived notions. You tell me what you want to do. I'll try to explain what are hot buttons for us and then just kind of go back.
Do you want to bring up what our hot buttons are? I guess I don't even know what they are.
That's nice.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I mean, I don't want to, you know, there isn't that, that there's an issue so much as at least now, now my contact with Jeremy leads me to believe that we will be able to come back to you with revisions to the agreement and it follow through on. And the past, you know, just for, I don't know why, but it just didn't happen. So I think this is a good step forward.
Yeah, I guess I'd be in favor of simplifying it. I mean, it was, obviously that agreement was put in place to, to purchase the land and then, but it was, you know, quite a while ago. I mean, they did pay for the land. They own it. But now we need to, it's something, you know, fresh, working, simple. If we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was, and John, who's not here, John Williams went as well. We have, we all had a great time. And Melissa, of course.
I mean, I do, I, the last comment I would make about what Jim had said, I mean, I am in, I mean, I'm generally in favor of a, a new agreement. I mean, if only, even if it's, I think that the agreement makes a lot of sense in 2008 because there are some very specific needs listed in there about things that we want. I mean, but there are, the, the needs, I think, for the village and the needs for us have certainly changed since then. And it, and so much of it is primarily about leveraging the sale of this land and sort of what the village is going to go to do that. What I, what I would ultimately like is an agreement which is concise and clear, contains both principles and specifics. So that we're not just talking about allotting a thousand square feet of storage for the park department, but have a principle about the way in which are the parks department and we, you know, work together. Or like as we, like if there's some sort of standard that we can use to evaluate the ways in which we build things in the future. I just, I mean, in some, I mean, I know we're a bunch of rugby players, but the document is fairly cumbersome. And there are different specific things that we put in several different places. And it's not, I mean, I, I think that there are ways that, working with whoever, whether it's, you know, like various trustees, staff or the, that we could take, you know, some of the essential kernels from the original and then come up with a way of reformulating something which revisits us again without.
Try to go back with a clear, concise, short agreement that covers and protects both parties.
Sure.
There we go. Yeah, I mean, you know, I have no issue with us revising the agreement. I think it needs to be revised to, now I feel like I have a warm body to work on it with. And, you know, you'll have your staff and we'll be able to talk to different people and we'll be able, so I, I, I feel that this is a nice, a quick step forward.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you very much for coming, Jeremy. Appreciate it.
Pleasure.
For your time. Great presentation.
Seven, unfinished business. Update on available meeting rooms in the village and possible website listing? Matt is not here.
Jeremy.
Do you have anything on that?
So there's a memo in your packet. The direction from the last time this was brought up was to call around and see what rooms were available in the village and to come up with a list to put on the website. So this is an update of the places that we called and what spaces are available.
Okay. And that can just go on the website? And they're okay with being on the website?
Well, that was, some of them were, some of them weren't. And so that's what the list was basically compiling with a memo.
Maybe recommend adding that Flynn Hall as well.
I was thinking that we could also put on there to call the clerk for other options. So that they know that there's others besides just what is listed.
So you could tell them the ones that didn't want to be on the website or?
Right. If, I mean, because is that what we kind of do now if people come asking to, for space? Do we give them ideas or?
It usually is, I mean, usually people do their own homework.
Yeah.
You know, if they're looking for a specific, and that's what we kind of found with the list, you know. It just depends, you know, they're either a church member that they know that they can use that area or they know, you know, other places that are available, so.
Do you have an idea for where it would go on the village website?
I haven't looked at it specifically. Probably how do I, and list it there because that's just one click.
Oh, yeah, and you have various topics.
Right, that we can list it there. We'll probably put it in maybe a couple of different places on the website, just in case if somebody misses it. But that probably is the most straightforward.
Yeah, I like that.
All right.
Jack, one thing that Lee and I talked about and, and at some point, we may want to look at our relationship with Flynn Hall. And because that's open. And because that's open, I mean, we, we pay for that, for the usage of that hall.
We may not be doing that going forward, but just, as an aside, the thought is, you know, you recommended to stop doing that.
I can provide you any information you want, not tonight, but
Right.
if the board wants any information on it, I have that for you, be happy to give it to you from a historical point of view, and then we can decide if you want to add that to that list, or continue to do that.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Eight A, new business, discuss and consider operator's license for year July twenty eighteen to June twenty nineteen for Joshua Reiser, Samantha Crowsey, and Cassandra Wonderland. Looking at the memo, I don't think there's any problem with these folks, Chief?
No, no problems.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I will.
Okay.
For a second.
Second. Motion and second to approve operator's licenses for Joshua Reiser, Samantha Crowsey, and Cassandra Wonderland. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Eight B, discuss and consider liquor license application for BB Jacks FEC, I don't remember what that stands for, Limited Liability Corporation, for licensing year October twenty eighteen to June twenty nineteen. This was gone through a plan commissioner, or not plan commission, sorry, but.
Oh, can we table this until after the action gets taken for the plan, the plan commission portion of it? Because we can't really.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah. Okay, well, yeah, we can.
So, if we just table this until later in the.
Or postpone.
No, we're just tabling it until later in the meeting.
Yep. Okay.
So, could you do that?
Sure.
Motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second to table eight B until later on in the agenda, for the rest of that item. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. All right. Discuss and consider Christmas in the Grove, we took care of. We're now down to number nine, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, Deer Grove EMS Commission. This is the budget as approved by the commission on September twentieth. You'll see some attachments in your packet. One of them is the explanations. Deer Grove EMS currently does not have a chief, they're hiring a chief, so, and Lisa, the interim chief, is not going to be the chief, she's not applying for it. So Matt and I met with her, and what you see there is what she had for the budget. And I'll let Troy, I guess John's not here, but if you have anything to add to that, Troy?
So, we met back, when was it? Couple, three weeks ago? Oh, it'll be a month ago, because we have a meeting that's coming Wednesday, Thursday. So they're looking at a, a total of nine point eight nine percent increase over last year. Village Cottage Grove impact is four point eight five. They assure us that there's no sort of, it's going to be any surprises coming up this year, like there were monitors, like there was ambulances a couple of years ago, and things like that. It's the lowest increase, I think, if we go back in the last five years.
Right.
They are, there is, I guess, there is an increase really for overtime, and part of that increase is figuring if there's more staffing, that we'll get more revenue from the runs than that.
Right, some of that's from the collective bargaining agreement that was approved, so.
Yeah.
Factors into it as well. Any questions on the, there's an explanations part of it for each line item, any questions on that? I guess this is listed as a discussion, I'm not discussing, considering. If there's no questions, I guess we can move on.
Sorry, or Lisa, is the estimated gross run fees, is that up or down from last, last year?
Deb was there, too, with us, I don't know, do you remember what they said, Deb, for a run through?
Much, too.
Yeah.
And I asked that question, too, to see how they felt that that was sustainable. And of course, you know, they're, just like everybody else, they don't have crystal ball, but they felt as though, given the area and the trends, that yes, that seems to be the way it's going.
It was a little bit of an interesting situation. Like I said, Lisa's not the chief, she's not going to be the chief, but she did put together the budget, and had some good explanations, so. All right. Anything else from Deer Grove, Troy? Joint Fire Department?
Yep. So, we got Tuesday, October second. We approved the renewal of Pleasant Springs contract with Cottage Grove Fire Department. Right now, it's at the Pleasant Springs lawyer, who we are locked in for twenty nineteen, because there's a clause in the contract that they have to notify the fire department, I think it's by April of the prior year, whether they're going to end the contract. So it automatically just renews. So that's currently in for twenty nineteen, we're locked in. So, it's at the lawyer there, all indications are that they're going to renew the contract, but we just don't have it signed hand back yet. I think at the joint meeting, you guys talked about the, the parking lot repaving. It's at the open house on, on Saturday, and the company that actually paved it was looking for some more money. They were to reline the backside of the garage for the trucks to, to back in and out of. It's not occurring, so Plan B might be to get with Public Works and see if, we might be able to get out there with some paint and actually line, line for the trucks to get in and out of the bays. We approved the agreement for fire protection services. And let's see here, we talked about the, the fire department budget here, somewhere. So there's a slight increase of, it's from twenty eighteen, it was one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And next year, it, the proposal which was approved was one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty. So, a slight increase of about one thousand, one hundred dollars. Some increases in certain areas, and decreases in other areas, but it's less than one percent, so I think it's more than fair, as did the, the rest of the board. Got approved unanimously, six oh. And then the emergency service building budget got approved, fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, which historically, going back, it was as high as, you know, fifty-nine, almost sixty thousand in twenty sixteen, fifty-nine thousand in twenty seventeen. The budget this past year, twenty eighteen, was fifty-two thousand, two hundred. The original request was for forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty, and we bumped that up three thousand to add for some potential Wi-Fi boosters, just to get connectivity throughout the emergency services building. That's all we have. Proposed next meeting date is November twenty-sixth, if needed.
John, in your, in the contract that was signed to pave the parking lot, were they supposed to provide striking as part of it?
Yep.
So they, so in addition to wanting more money, they aren't fulfilling the contract?
I think Chief might be able to explain a little bit better about returning phone calls, or.
I'm just thinking, if there's questions on a budget, I guess, so.
Wherever it was.
So, my understanding, the agreement for the parking lot, they used a overhead view of what was existing, and they were going to follow or mark that, you know, that layout. Originally, when it was completed, and I apologize if I get hoarse, got a little, something going on. They didn't strike in front of the doors that we had, they came back and did that, with the assumption that they were going to do the back as well, and they did not. But now, since the discussion with the overage, and things occurring, the fact that they're going to consider that they're probably underpaid, I don't know that they're going to come back, or be willing to come back, for that matter. They ended up with an overage of, what, sixteen thousand, nine hundred, I think?
Yeah, almost seventeen thousand.
That they thought was fair, that he would cover half, which I think is ridiculous, so. The chances of them coming back and striking in the rear is probably slim enough. It's four lines, if we can work with Public Works, or if I've got a, I don't know, tape it off and paint it by hand, I guess we can do that as well. So.
What about the parking spaces that are too narrow, are you going to?
So what Jack's referring to as well, when they striped it, the stalls are the, you know, striking became narrower. Unfortunately, a lot of our firefighters were pickup trucks, and now if we actually fit our pickup trucks in the lines, we've got about a foot to get out. We're not all really small people, either. Really, the only thing that could correct that is they would have to come back, black out the stripes, and then repaint. The problem is that they blacked it out over time, that would wear out, you're going to have stripes all over the place. So, we're just going to have door dings for our insurance companies to deal with.
Okay. Well, the good news is that supposedly, the agreement is done, and it's being acted on by the town tonight, so. We, we would, we do have an agreement, so we can use these, or continue to use these.
Sure. Again, if there's any questions on the budget or anything else, I'd be more than happy to answer if there are.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Sure, and then, real quickly, worth mentioning, the town Pleasant Springs, we're hoping for that contract to be renewed. That is on the agenda for Pleasant Springs tomorrow evening, so I'll be there in attendance, and we'll let you know how that goes. The assumption is that it will be.
Right. So, Chief, if you wouldn't mind sitting down here for a moment, here is something, emergency government, I don't know if you've seen anything on this, but.
Yeah, anywhere.
Emergency government is the next.
Actually, a question about the Pleasant Springs contract, then, is it supposed to be a five-year contract again?
That's what it's been in the past, is every time, so we just completed, or would complete at the end of this year, our second five-year contract. The hope is to, again, continue for another five year. As John alluded to, they would have had to notify us by April first of this year if they were going to open it up for bid. They did not do that, so we're definitely locked in for twenty nineteen. Again, the assumption is, it was just more legality of going through the contracts and things with their attorneys. We assume that it will be another five-year.
So, would that five years start in twenty twenty? Or does twenty nineteen get encompassed in the five years, even though we're already locked in?
It would encompass twenty nineteen as well. So, the hope is that it begins January of twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Again, we'll definitely know tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Emergency government, did it, on the budgets, or, or not? Oh, sorry, yeah. Anybody have any other questions on the budget, or want to make a motion to approve the budget?
The fire department. I'll make a motion to approve the joint fire budget as submitted, as a reminder. It's going to be a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars total. Okay. And then the next proposed village joint operational budget, if I'm reading this correctly, will be sixty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-six and forty-five cents.
That's correct.
Yep.
There a second?
I have a second.
Motion and second to approve the budget, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you. All right, emergency government, update from Attorney Busha on the emergency government entities.
We met October third, discussed possible tabletop exercise with Landmark Services. Mr. Wolf said he'd talk to Mike at Landmark, see what the interest there is. In, in an exercise probably focused either on anhydrous ammonia or propane type of leak, start with a tabletop in the, in the spring. Also, there's some discussion in that arena as to having possibly a backup UFC location in the event of something that is going on at Landmark. It's highly likely that that location might be in jeopardy of being able to utilize the facility. We did discuss village, or the emergency government and ordinances, and Lee, I'll kind of let you take over. In a nutshell, you know, what's communicated to the committee is that it looks like our ordinances are in line with, in case there in any event of emergency or anything else with the state statutes.
Yeah, the, the question that I raised is this, if you, and I enclosed a copy of the current ordinance for, so that you could actually see what, where this comes from. We, the, our chapter thirty-six does set up the, the joint committee with the town, the joint emergency government committee. And then, the ordinance also creates an office of director of emergency government, but that is, that is an office that is not currently filled. So, you've got the committee, you've got this office of emergency government, and then if the village fills that office, then, as it stands right now, if that office remains empty, then if there was a emergency, the way the ordinance reads is that it would be the chairman of the committee, of the joint fire committee, joint emergency government committee, that would fill that spot. My question is simply this, do we want, does the village board want to say, well, look, we would prefer not to put the committee chair in that position? We should have a professional, whether it's the fire chief, or the police chief, or whatever. But should we appoint someone to serve as that director? That's really all I'm asking. And if, if you did that, as far as I'm concerned, the ordinance is just fine. If you want to have a private individual be that person in case of an emergency, that's a choice, too. So, that's what my memo was about, and my question on the ordinance.
And, and really, you're, Lee and I have talked, his suggestion would be to have Mr. Wolf here, our fire chief, be that person. He's unbiased, town, village, you know. Likelihood is, if there's an emergency, you're going to be on the scene anyways. You're, you're going to be asking us for additional services that you might need provided, so. Is that something you would be interested in, if, if we present that to the emergency government?
I have no issue doing it. You know, when something's going on, we would have several appointments, you know, and that's going to depend whether it's town or village, as he's suggesting, you know, I'm, I'm biased as far as that goes, you know. Depends where the incident is located, and chances are, I'll be on scene, but we've got enough people that we can appoint and, and deal with the situation. This would be something joint, again, as mentioned, you know, chief of police, or Dane County Sheriff, and EMS as well, you know, once we get command posts and a lot of different things established, you know, it's not, it would just be me appointing these individuals.
So the fire chief would be the designated emergency government director, unless otherwise?
Yes, he would have the title, but no extra fee.
Story of my life.
Wearing a lot of hats all of a sudden.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it just seems like he would be the logical person, and again, it's, it's one of those things where it's never come up, and that's great. But in the event that there was an emergency of some kind, to know that you did have someone like the chief in position, I think, makes a lot of sense.
Okay. You know, if we can, if you can forward that to Kim at the town, so that can be discussed at the next meeting, then? You provided that copy of the document.
Yeah, I'm just going to just send, send her my.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, they're on the same page.
Because then we can put that on as an agenda item for the next emergency government meeting, so.
Do, do you know when that is, Troy?
What was that?
Do you know when emergency government is, the next one?
It's the Wednesday, the first Wednesday.
Changed it to the first Thursday, did you?
Well, I haven't gone to that yet.
Okay.
They couldn't in November.
Oh, that's right. So it's first Wednesday in November?
Yeah, so, so also, we did talk about moving the meeting day, and it was decided that it's going to move, starting on the, in December, to the first Thursday of the month. So next month, it'll still be on Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
And other than that, nothing earth-shattering, next meeting is Wednesday, the seventh of November. Any questions at all? Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So, we're supposed to discuss and consider the emergency government?
Yeah, so if we want to make a motion to have Lee contact town and designate the fire chief as our designated emergency government director, is that, I guess, suggested this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess, are we, are we premature in doing that, if, if the town doesn't want to have it that way?
Yeah, me, me, what we do, that's a, that's a good point, I think, the way that I have written my memo. I think the way that I had written my memo was that we refer it to emergency government.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, so we can just...
So, we don't need a motion?
I'd just say, you know, that we would refer it to have the village attorney forward the necessary information to the town for consideration at their meeting.
Yeah, I'm thinking we should make it, make sure everybody's on the same page, we're copacetic, before we make a motion, and then we have to change something down the road.
That work for you?
Yes, I made that motion.
Okay. All right. Is there a second? I'll second it, then. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Community Development Authority, there is a, the agenda document from October 8th in your packet. I'll let Aaron talk about that a little bit. I guess I was not there at that meeting.
Yeah. Paul Silverston was there to go over the branding initiative that the chamber had done with the village and town. We talked about marketing efforts. In previous years, we'd been doing an ad in the Madrep Guide, their economic development magazine. We've talked about doing a smaller, less expensive ad, and using the balance for other efforts, such as hiring a photographer to do some updated photography of the village that we can use on the website, and in marketing materials, and things like that. We'll finalize that at the next meeting. Then, Jim and Mary Ann Greedy were there to present their project, and we'll talk about that in more detail under the Plan Commission.
Okay. All right. Finance and personnel agenda? Finance and personnel. I should say, we met on October 9th. James is the chairman, or what?
Sure. We went over the budget, and, of course, Matt did his trimming, which was very helpful. We, the levy is increased by 7.1%, but the net impact on percentage of the taxes going up will be 2.8% as Matt presented it. We spent a lot of time going over the whole budget, but we kind of focused on three changes, one of which was, the committee voted to postpone doing the reevaluation, which took, saved us $33,000. And then, we did spend a lot of time talking about how the new parks employee staff person could be utilized. Some of the committee members felt like it should be utilized by Public Works in addition to Parks. And I think Matt was going to work with the department heads to work that out, right? Any other thoughts on that, or? Nope? Okay. But that wasn't an impact on the budget. And then, the last thing is, the, some of the committee members didn't feel like we should be buying a used car for the detective. They agreed that we need to get rid of the pickup and the old beater car, but wanted to, I think, use that reevaluation savings to get a decent car that we could use interchangeably with the other. Did Lieutenant tell you this at all?
Yeah, I heard about it.
Okay, you heard about it. So, I don't know what your feelings are about that, Chief?
I'm all for it.
Okay, great. Easy, yeah. So, that's, that's, we appreciated you trying to economize, but they thought, long-term, that's a better thing to do. And that was about it. Those were the major discussion points. But, it was an easier evening because the increase is only at 2.8% right now, the way it stands, as long as we don't add anything else to it.
Right. Actually, I think the spending was up to 7.1%.
Correct.
Some of that spending is coming from, what's the term? Start with an R. Reserves. And the actual levy would be up 2.8%.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. And some of it, I think, came from an increased, more property in the village, too.
Yeah.
So, that there was a couple, a lot of moving parts, but for the village residents, 2.8% increase.
Right. Capital investment, again, in capital.
Yeah. The capital budget.
Yeah.
Yep. So, all good.
All right. That brings us down to Plan Commission. Item A, Discuss and Consider Request from BB Jack's Restaurant for Approval of a Conditional Use Permit to Permit an Indoor Commercial Entertainment Land Use for Bar Restaurant Serving Alcohol to be Located in an Existing Multi-Tenant Building Located at 1609 Landmark Drive. All right, Aaron.
So, this is, indoor commercial entertainment is kind of a broad land use category, includes things like restaurants and bars. And when they serve alcohol or are adjacent to a residential property, they require a conditional use permit. So, that's all this is. It's going into the former Gadorzy, now Gray Wolf Building at the southern end. It's about 10,000 square feet, bar restaurant with a game room associated with it. The Plan Commission voted to recommend approval. The only condition was that it applies to this business of this location specifically.
Okay. All right. Any comments, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I second.
Motion and second to approve the request for the conditional use permit. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Now, we gotta go back up to six.
Right.
Yeah.
Make a motion to take that off the table for the liquor license?
Okay. Motion and second to take that off the table for the liquor license. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is back on the table. All right.
Make a motion that we approve the liquor license for BB Jack's.
Okay. I'll second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. That passes. Thank you. And, jumping back down to 9B now. Discuss and Consider a Request from John Schneider LLC for Approval of a Final Plaid for the West Drumland Subdivision.
Brian, everyone, I'm John Schneider's Assistant.
Okay.
On behalf of JSBC, just, here's a few questions.
Okay. Aaron?
The final plaid hasn't changed from the preliminary plaid. They cleaned up all the conditions of approval from the preliminary plaid, both on the plaid and in the covenants. So, we're recommending approval. The only condition is really just a reminder about the park fees and everything.
Okay.
Recommend approval. Plan Commission approved it by 2-0.
All right. Unanimously approved by Plan Commission. Does somebody wanna make a motion to...
A motion that we approve the final plaid for West Drumland Subdivision. John Schneider.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve, with the conditions Aaron mentioned, it sounds good to you with those conditions? Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 9C, Discuss and Consider a Request from James and Mary Ann Garrity for Approval of a Site Plan for the First Phase of an Office in Light Industrial Project to be Located at 4901 County Highway N. Hello again.
Hello again. Thank you very much for putting up with us so many times. Mary Ann and Greedy, I think we've gotten to know each other reasonably well, at least over the last month. Based on the results of the last two meetings I've been to, I'm pretty comfortable and moderately prepared that you guys are likely to deny our request tonight. So, instead of going through more information about our project, I thought I might describe sort of the journey that we've been on over the last year or so, and maybe that'll be helpful to the village as future applicants come along. And I would like to thank Lisa for the minutes that were on the website that was helpful for me to kind of try to remember what had actually happened over the last year or so. And thanks for putting them out there. So, Mary Ann and I started looking for land to put storage units in Dane County about two years ago. We probably looked at 40, 50 different sites. We had found a couple sites in Sun Prairie. We were all set to start to develop those. We were working with the city planner in Sun Prairie. When driving home, I saw a sign on the road for this particular piece of property, which is about a mile from my house. Asked the realtor to do some research, he went onto your website. It looked like it was going to fit, our plan was gonna fit within the comprehensive plan. And so, he had suggested that we contact Aaron, who's the village planner. Mary Ann sent Aaron an email. And more or less, what Aaron said is that the CDA was working on some changes to how that use was going to be handled, but more than likely, with a rezoning process, we would be able to make that happen. And he pointed out that the rezoning would require approval by the Plan Commission and the village board. And at that point, he didn't mention the CDA. I'm guessing it wasn't part of the process at that point. This was the document that we had looked at, and I think this is still there. This was from February, so it's about six months old by the time we first saw it. And again, up here is where our site is, and office in line industrial, where the planned uses. So, then I set up a meeting with Aaron, and I came on in, and I talked with him, and I explained what we were planning on doing. And he explained to me what, for simplicity sake down the road, I'm just gonna refer to as the rezoning paradox. So, this particular piece of property was zoned as rural holding. In order for us to do storage units, it needed to be rezoned to planned industrial. The comprehensive plan said that you couldn't rezone it to planned industrial unless there were utilities. There were no utilities, therefore, technically, it wouldn't allow to be rezoned, but since our project didn't require utilities, it likely could be rezoned. So, it was kind of a circle. So, but it made sense to me. So, I said, okay, makes sense, right? At the same time, he also showed me some other properties in the Commerce Park, and then he told me that there could possibly be some monies available through some TIF funding. And then, that evening, I sent him an email saying, hey, Aaron, you know, what's this TIF funding stuff? And, you know, I said, we have about 20 employees, now we have about 32. So, when I read this, I was like, wow, we've really grown a lot in the last year, which is crazy. And we were planning on doing about a million dollars in construction. And he said, well, if it's village land, you might be able to get a reduction in the price of the land, and if it's private land, we might be able to give you some money for specific unexpected costs, project costs. So, I said, okay, you know, great. So, now I'm looking at a piece of land that I think our project fits with the comprehensive plan. I think it fits with where we live. Again, we're a mile away. It's a nice flat piece of land, it's good size, and we might get some TIF money. I think this is a better site than the ones that we were looking at in Sun Prairie. So, we went ahead, we made an offer, then we started working on a site plan. I put together a very rough sketch and sent it over to Aaron, which then, he suggested we could bring to the Plan Committee for review. On the 13th of September, the Plan Committee looked at it, and they said, you know, the CDA is doing some stuff, and we'd really like them to give some input. So, I said, okay, great. I'm happy to bring it to them. A couple days later, the folks selling the property accepted our offer, and then, I hired a civil engineer, and maybe $2,000 or something. We put up a preliminary site plan, which we brought back to Aaron for input, and then eventually to the CDA. And then, that was on September 9th. I went to the CDA meeting, and at the CDA meeting, again, I'm sorry, these are so small, but Aaron explained the rezoning paradox again. And the Plan Committee said, after much discussion on the rezon, the committee would like more information before a decision could be made, and they voted to table their decision on that, on that site plan. And at that meeting, there were two folks who were particularly vocal in opposition to our plan. One of them was Matt, and the other one was Mick Conrad. And so, I asked for meetings with both of them, so I could understand what their concerns were. Mick was very gracious, and what he said was that, since the comprehensive plan had an article that said you should avoid rezoning, if they rezoned it, it would set a precedent. And so, he was trying to avoid that, and he said that the TIF plans were being developed, and that within a relatively short period of time, there very well could be money, and that the utilities might be built sooner rather than later. Therefore, we might not need to set a precedent going against the comprehensive plan. So, he suggested that we wait until the TIDs were established, and then we would know better where we were. And he was the one who encouraged that I should come to all the various meetings that you may have seen me throughout the summer, so that I would understand how those TIDs were developing. So, I also met with Aaron and Matt and my civil engineer, and they basically reiterated the rezoning paradox. So, the next day, so that meeting was on the 9th, the next day, the sale of our property closed. All the TID creation went on over the summer. At the end of the summer, I guess May isn't quite the end, but maybe the beginning of the summer, I suppose, the preliminary TID plan, project plan was released. And so, I set up a time to meet back with Aaron and go through that, and see how that affected our plans. And basically, what we said was, okay, great, we still have this rezoning paradox, right? Because the plans to fund the utilities aren't gonna happen until several years down the road. So, he said, we still have this, the same paradox. And I thought about, so I left the meeting, and I was thinking about it, and I said, you know what? I feel like I'm in exactly the same place I was eight months ago. We just keep saying there's this loop that we have to deal with. And so, I said, you know, what do we need to do to deal with this paradox? And again, Aaron was super. He spent God only knows how long typing this email. So, again, and to be perfect on it, Aaron, I sent hundreds of emails to Aaron, I looked at them, hundreds. And he's been super about responding to all of them, which I really, really appreciate. But, basically, what he said, and that's this part up at the top, he basically said that, at this point, the main hang-up is the following policy in the comprehensive plan, and he reiterates the rezoning paradox. And then, he said, and they require a specific development plan. And in the next paragraph here, he says, I believe that your complete project is compatible with the village's vision. And then, in the bottom, he suggested that we go ahead and actually put together a complete site plan submittal. And again, that probably turns out to be a 20-some-a-thousand-dollar decision. And I haven't gotten the final bill yet, but it's gonna end up being there somewhere. So, I asked my civil engineer to start working on that process, and it takes a long time. It's a lot of documentation, a lot of work. So, by the Plan Committee for last month, he had the materials required for the rezone and the conditional use permit. So, that's what we brought to the Plan Committee. And Aaron, to the Plan Committee, reiterated the rezone paradox. And then, he recommended that the committee approve both the rezone and the conditional use permit with a whole bunch of conditions, including that the CDA shall have the opportunity to provide feedback on the site plan. So, this is the first time that I had seen that the CDA was now involved, but they were just gonna give feedback, as far as I was understanding. With all the conditions, I had some concerns about them. So, again, I sent an email, this massive email to poor Aaron, saying, I have all these concerns. And Aaron, again, spent I don't know how long answering all my concerns in turn, which I really appreciated. And then, what he said was, keep in mind, the conditions in this report are a starting point for discussion. With your input at the meeting, the Plan Commission will discuss and may edit, remove, or add to those. So, I was thinking that that meant I should bring up my concerns at the Plan Commission, which I then did, which then seemed to cause lots of confusion, as I think we all remember, or those of us, I guess, who were there. And so, throughout that meeting, which became very confusing, we did clarify, I think, some things, or got folks close enough, that that committee was able to approve the rezoning on a mixed vote, but they voted to table the conditional use permit. That rezoning, then, came to the board last month, where it was approved unanimously. And so, in my mind, I had finally overcome that one issue that had been hanging out there since last August. And so, I'm thinking, great, we're good to go, right? And now, I have to go get input on my site plan from the CDA, but then, when I look at the agenda, it says for approval. And I'm like, well, wait a minute. Way back in the beginning, Aaron said approval was just the Plan Committee and the Board. At the last thing, the agreement was it was for input, but now it's for approval. But, I guess I don't know when those decisions are made, and how that all happens. So, I go to the CDA meeting, and again, Aaron has recommended that our plans, both the conditional use permit, as well as the site plan, are approved with conditions that I thought were very, very reasonable. And yet, when it came to the discussion for the CDA members, they were all completely opposed, and they voted six to zero to deny our requests, primarily stating something along the lines of, they look at that site as a site for a very large development, they're hoping possibly there will be some corporate headquarters out there, and they wanted to start with a clean slate, they didn't want some other small development, and definitely not storage units out there that would impact, impact that future development. Am I saying that? Thank you. So this is the first time that I'm really hearing, no, we don't want your development there. And the part that's more concerning to me, and I think the part that becomes a bigger issue maybe for the village as a whole, is, you know, Aaron's kind of your point man. He's the guy guiding all developers through the process, I think. So the fact that on this particular date, he's on one page and the CDA members are on a totally different page is a little concerning to me. And I would say they're not even just on different pages, but it's like, he's on one page and, you know, they're on another page in another book in another library across town, right? Because it's not even close. So if, it just seems so shocking, and I was just really taken back. So then a couple days later, I have to go to the Plan Committee to get approvals, and of course, they deny, although it was interesting because it was a mixed denial, which I was a little interested by, but more or less, it was difficult for them to say no, or to say yes, rather, since the CDA had said no. So that put them in a tight spot. And that brings me to here, where I think it's probably difficult for you to say no, or say yes, rather, since the Plan Commission said no. But in my mind, you know, I've probably spent over a year of my time, who knows how many hours, you know, sleepless nights, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, I passed up on the site in Sun Prairie. If Aaron would have known back in August, when I contacted him, that you guys wanted a big corporate center with no other developments there, he should have known, and he should have told me, and I never would have bought that stuff. And even as much as last month, if he knew that that was the case, he should have recommended that it was denied, and you guys should have followed. So I guess my request for you all is to find a way to get everybody on the same page, have a consistent message, starting at the website, because that's where my realtor went first, all the way through all the committees, and all the way at the end, so that, you know, we can avoid all of this, for me, for you, for Aaron, for everybody else. So that's my request.
That would be the first time I've seen the Village Board go against the Plan Commission or CDA. I mean, it's not a concrete thing. It's a recommendation to deny, if I understand correctly, is that right, Aaron? And in my mind, you got into this game before the CDA was even a player in the game, and so the rules changed in the middle through no fault of yours or Aaron's or anybody's. And I think you've been through enough, and I have a real hard time turning down a business of any kind. I would be fine approving your permit for that business.
Could I just ask if Aaron could respond to what that might be?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's always been, I think the CDA kind of looked at it as a timing issue as well, as not just wanting your project. I think they were concerned about the effect storage units would have on other development that could be surrounding it, if we knew more about what that was, if we knew more about the timing of the utilities, it might have been a little bit of a different issue. I think the Plan Commission kind of said the same thing, at least some of the members. You know, the division out there was this mix of office and industrial, which completed your project would have, because you're also looking at, I don't know if the board is familiar with the whole site plan you were kind of looking at, but the office for moving forward, as well as some other leasable spaces, both the larger warehouse and smaller kind of warehouse office type things. I guess in my opinion, that whole project would be a better fit. I think there's some concern with the CDA and the Plan Commission about the timing of that, and what happens if, you know, the storage units are built first, and then the rest of it isn't completed, or if you're looking for an incentive that we're not willing to give, or something like that, then is it going to be just the storage units? Yeah, so I, you know, I certainly think the way you've designed it and the kind of attention you've given to the materials and things like that, I think you've certainly done your best to make it a nice-looking facility that's going to fit. You know, I think we tried to avoid doing the whole site plan process. We kind of put that off a month, because the first time around, we were trying to do just the conditional use permit. And that did open up all those other questions, because typically, those are done at the same time. And then you've got to know what the plan is that you're going to get. We tried to do the conditional use permit first to kind of help you avoid the whole site design, but there were just so many questions about what are the buildings going to look like. You know, just trying to ensure what the quality of the development would be ahead of time was just kind of difficult for the Plan Commission to handle, so that's why they tabled that, and then we did the site plan and conditional use permit at the same time.
Any thoughts from the board members? I mean, the CDA is a CDA, but they do also make a recommendation, they don't have the final say in this, as I understand. And the Plan Commission, you said, was sort of a mixed bag of, they would like it, but...
I think it was four in one.
Yeah. And, I mean, for my part, I don't feel your facility is going to scare somebody else away. I think we're turning down a business if we turn down this proposal. You said you have how many people working for you now?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two? That's jobs.
One of the concerns the CDA had was that the number of jobs that have any storage facility would bring in. Now, the overall, your overall plan is phenomenal for bringing in jobs and having more, but it's that first initial move is what I think the main concern was for everybody at the meeting that day.
And I did explain it to the CDA also, that, you know, obviously, the challenging part is if we don't develop the storage units here, then we need to move the storage units somewhere else, and our business goes where those storage units go. So, you know, in some theoretical realm, depending upon how you do your math, you know, along with storage units come thirty-two jobs, but, you know, I guess, I mean, I don't know.
Any thoughts from other members? I'll move approval of the request for the site plan for the office and light industrial project at forty-nine oh one County Highway N. Is there a second? I guess motion dies for lack of a second. All right. 9D, that's kind of a moot issue then, I believe.
If you could just ask if there are other motions?
Anybody want to make a different motion?
Doubt, but is there other, any other motions for 9A?
Are there motions? Okay, all right, moving on 9D then.
So can I ask what happens then?
I made a motion to approve, and it died for lack of a second, so my apologies.
No, no, and that's fine. Does that mean it's denied? I mean, is there a, I mean, what's...
Somebody's got to make a motion to deny it then, if they want to make a motion to deny it.
Where does it go if it's not approved or denied? What happens then?
That's a good question.
I don't know, right off the top of my head, in terms of whether it just, whether it comes back to us. It hasn't been tabled, no actions really occurred, other than the first motion has been turned down.
I mean, there's only two choices, either approve it or deny it, is what I understand.
Prove it, deny it, table it. Maybe there's a third. I don't know what the sense of the board is.
And again, I would, we'd love closure on this, right? So if you want to deny it, that's what we're prepared for, right? To be honest, that's what we're expecting. So we would love to just say we're done, and then I can go to sleep, and I don't have to worry about it, right? So, again, I would beg somebody to do something, just so at least we know where we are.
Anybody else want to make a motion?
Yeah, the Plan Commission, I had brought up that I like their, I like your business. I think it's a great business model, and I, I want you to stay here. I think you're good for our community. I think it's a great, I love that a woman runs it. And I am glad that you employ thirty-two people, it's great, and that it's growing. The issue is where it's located on, in the TID, it's right in the middle, and that's what it came down to.
And I totally get that. And again, if it's not a fit there, I get it, and, you know, so...
I mean, if it was at the end of the TID life or after something, or if it was at like at a side or a corner, it'd be different, but you picked the best piece of land.
I know, it was a lucky guess, right? I did look at lots of properties, it's true, it is true.
And we love it, we love the land, it's great, but we just, yeah.
So like I said, I was totally, totally prepared for it to be denied, so, but I guess that's why, even to hear that it might be approved is interesting, but I would appreciate just being done, so.
And I can understand Jack's motion, because we don't want to, want business to leave. I mean, that's not, it's not what we want to do, so I can totally understand that.
Somebody needs to make a motion, I guess, then.
Okay, I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Motion and second to deny the request for approval of a site plan at forty-nine oh one County Highway N. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Abstentions? Motion passes. That it means 9D is moot then, Lee, or does that... Or do we have to deny that as well?
We don't deny that as well.
Yeah, I resist you.
Okay.
I would think if we don't have a site plan, what would we be, need to deny a conditional use permit?
Right. You need a motion for that to be there?
This is cleaner.
Yeah, just, yeah, same side.
I'll make a motion to deny the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to deny the conditional use permit for forty-nine oh one County Highway N. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you for explaining what you went through.
Yeah. Hope you make a profit on the land.
Oh, I think it's a great spot, so...
All right, reports from village officers, Troy?
No report.
Jane?
No report.
No report.
Melissa?
There's a free winter car inspection this Saturday at Mineki by the Triad, so if they take reservations, and then you get a free goodie thing for fifty-five and older.
Okay. All right, John Russell?
Just got a couple texts from people that couldn't be here. The YouTube livestream is not working, so I don't know if it's going to be time delayed, but YouTube for this meeting is not working.
Okay. We'll have to figure out what's going on there. John Williams is absent and excused. The only thing under my name is, John, I believe you said you were interested in Deer Grove VMS?
Once the, once the chief is hired.
Once the chief is hired?
Yeah.
Okay.
To just make it clean.
All right.
Well, did you want to be alternate at this point? Because I don't think John's going to be able to...
John's got some commitments tonight that he can't make it, I guess. I mean, I'm willing to go, I'm just trying to make it a cleaner transition, if you want to be the alternate at this point.
That's fine.
Okay.
Should we make a motion?
Yeah, if you want to appoint him as alternate at this point, and then we'll make it official when you have a chief.
I know that John would still like to be the alternate, just because of his schedule on that committee, so, John Williams, I should say, that's...
So eventually, John Russell will be the member, and John Williams will be the alternate.
Once we get the hiring process, then...
But if he's not able to make the meetings as an alternate, how can he remain an alternate?
I'm sorry?
If John Williams can't make the meetings as an alternate because of his other commitments, how can he remain an alternate?
John, John just needed to get off the committee on a monthly basis because of his kids' school schedules. He doesn't want, he still would like to be an alternate on the committee. He's not looking to get entirely off the committee, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I guess we could appoint John Russell as Deer Grove VMS member, effective when you have a chief, is that...
I can just wait.
We could table it, too.
Yeah, you can table it, I just, I think there'd be a lot of questions if a noncommittee member, the hiring process, it just, to me, it seems a little horny.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to table appointment of John Russell for Deer Grove VMS commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second to table the appointment of John Russell for Deer Grove VMS. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Lee Boucher?
In lieu of a lengthy and presentation, I will have no report.
Matt is absent and excused, on his honeymoon apparently, so I'm sure he's watching. All right.
We've got over two hundred responses for the complan survey, so if you haven't taken it, please do, and tell your friends, it's going to be up for about two and a half weeks.
All right, Chief Labor?
Nothing.
Nothing? JJ Charn?
No sir.
All right.
Yeah? She got, she got an article in the newsbeaver. Yes.
Oh, gee. Wow.
Congratulations.
Famous.
Somebody turning red.
From embezzlement, wasn't it? That's the one that bothers me. That's the one reason you get on front page, right? As a treasurer? It's like offensive land.
Yeah. All right, communications and miscellaneous business, consider approval of vouchers. Any comments, questions?
What's the grenade single pouch, like an actual grenade? For the Deerfield Pistol Center?
We don't have grenades.
I'd buy a grenade single pouch with speed clips.
Speed clips?
Yeah, with speed clips.
For guns.
Okay. It's called grenade single pouch?
Pardon?
It's called grenade single pouch with speed clips, huh? All right.
I would have to look at it, I'm not sure.
I just found it interesting as well, as well.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Correspondents, nothing official, just a letter from the DNR about something about if we had any flood damage in recent flooding, but I got a sticky note here from Matt that says, we didn't have anything worth reporting, so we don't have to worry about applying for aid, and some things like that. That's not official, okay? Upcoming community events, anybody?
Just the carbonization on Saturday.
Okay. All right, future agenda items, I believe we tabled, where is it here? The Deer Grove VMS appointment of John Russell, and the ordinance we're good on, right? With the emergency government?
Yeah, we've just sent it to the two emergency governments in town.
Okay, so it'll be back on our agenda at some point? Okay?
Yeah, I'd assume it'll be after the next meeting.
All right. Anything else, future agenda? Otherwise, we are down to item thirteen, or twelve, sorry.
I moved to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second? Motion and second to adjourn, non-debatable.